Good afternoon. We would like to call this May 18 study session to order before we lose the attention of all of this council. Sorry. I'm not sure we have any members of the public here today, so I feel like I can really joke around with everybody. Anyway, sorry for being late. We are grateful that you all are here. So, the first item on our study session is the Gilbert Wellness Update. So Kristin, I think we'll have you go first, and then we have some conversation with Kelly, right? We'll just cycle through all these, so don't feel like you need me to reintroduce everybody. Left turn operations, signalized intersections, and I think for number four, we are postponing that conversation until this evening at our sign code, actual sign code conversation. Is that accurate? Anybody want to nod? Okay, Heather got it. Thanks Heather. I knew I got that information from a reliable source. Thank you. All right, Kristin, it's all you.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am happy to give you an update on the Gilbert Wellness Program. I have this, we're implementing this in several phases, so I'll touch on each of these as I go through. The first phase was in fiscal year 16, so staff was tasked with creating a wellness program for Gilbert. That team included the assistant to the town manager, HR director, and benefits division staff. We did some research, looked at other programs, tried to find pros, cons, created Gilbert Wellness, simple as our name, and then different dimensions to focus on. A lot of programs, obviously, will use physical. There's varying dimensions that they include. We have all encompassing eight dimensions of wellness. They include intellectual, occupational, spiritual, financial, social, physical, environmental, and psychological. The program was launched one year ago, May of 2016, at our Health and Wellness Fair. We debuted the logo, and we did have a survey for employees to just gather information on what they'd like to see and how they would like to hear about the different things going on in the program. So Phase Two, this current year, fiscal year 17, really focused on informing employees about the program, educating them on what the dimensions are. We worked with IT and established a wellness page on the SharePoint site. We've sent out approximately 40 different announcements, and they all will include the full Gilbert logo as well as the dimension logo, whichever is applicable to what we're talking about. We also partnered with our fabulous communications team, and they created different videos for the different dimensions. So we have launched eight videos, one for each dimension. We picked a month, and each month focused on a different dimension of wellness, and those videos featured our different directors. So that was helpful to show the employees that this program is supported from the management down, and the communications team really worked to make them fun as well as educational. And then we've had about six different events through the year, luncheon learns, contests kind of things. This picture here is from our lunch on the lawn where we encouraged people to go out with their coworkers, find a spot in their area, move around and have a healthy lunch. This is your Parks and Rec team with their Team Gilbert swag, and they're all holding apples if you can't really see what's there. In addition, we've added some wellness champions. We have about 15 employees throughout the town. They represent different departments and facilities, and they help us get word out to employees as well as bring information back to us related to what they'd like to see. This team meets monthly, and we talk about different ideas. We have a big spreadsheet that has lots of ideas that we can use going forward, and it's been really helpful in getting word out to different departments. So the next phase is really exciting, and we want to focus on engagement and incentives. We continue to promote that Gilbert Wellness logo as well as increase employee engagement by different activities, finding what they want, focusing on some health issues. Diabetes is a big one. We want to get some biometrics in so we can start doing some measuring, and then also kind of focus on work-life balance. That's a big one for us. We've talked with Mary and Julie in regard to the work climate study to see how we can correlate to some of those things. And then in addition to the team, the champions, we now also have the additional resource of Willis Towers Watson, Aetna, and Banner. Aetna does have a wellness coordinator that they have that will help us with strategies. And with the incentives, Aetna also has on their portal a way that they can track and we can run incentives through them. So we're excited to explore those opportunities. And then going forward, we will be kind of in-depth and improving. So far, we've kind of had a peanut butter spread, so kind of a one-size-fits-all. But as we get into this, we really want to see what works for public works, what works for police. Everyone has kind of different needs, so as we get through, we'll have kind of our basic things that will maintain calendar, but then we can tweak those based on the different needs of the department. So we're starting good. We're getting better. The goal is best in class, and with that, we will continue to evolve based on the needs of the organization. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Kristin on the Gilbert Health and Wellness, Gilbert Wellness Program?
Not a question, but a comment. Kristin, you're a rock star. I just want to say thank you so much for taking this on and running with it because it's been amazing, the changes that you've made just in the time that you've been in the position. And going to the incentivize, so my husband's company is doing the same thing. He works for a big company, so it's a little bit different. They have lots and lots of employees. But they have done this program that if you enter so many points, you earn an Amazon gift card.
Yes.
And so one of the ways we can do that is by taking our blood pressure, and they actually mailed us each a little blood pressure machine, and it goes to an app on my phone, and we take our blood pressure every night, and he gets points.
Nice.
Simple, yeah, but at least to keep track of what your blood pressure is on a daily basis or a regular basis. You can set alarms to do it, so I love the idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we've got a question from staff if we should not take our blood pressure readings during council meetings.
Councilmember Anderson just said, "And depending on how the meeting goes, depending on how your blood pressure is," and it's only been high one time, and it was after a conversation with somebody in the, in the area that I was talking to after another meeting.
David Fabiano said he was sorry for that conversation.
I hope this isn't how all of tonight goes. All right, Kelly, you're up.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we wanted to start talking about some stormwater utility rate changes. As you'll remember, in the February retreat, we talked about a lot of utility rate change possibilities, and there wasn't clear direction on the stormwater or environmental services area. So the ask tonight is we've got some more information for you, and if we could get some direction back, that will help us be able to notice and, excuse me, notice and be able to move forward in this area as well. So as we spoke about, the Environmental Service Residential Fund, if we do nothing, it does not have a very positive outlook over the next five years. And this is a lot to do with adding the compliance programs into this fund in 2016. We did not add any funding with it as well. The environmental compliance, we often talk about it as the stormwater fund, but it's actually stormwater and air quality both. So the stormwater is mandated through the state, and there are specific requirements we need to meet, and then the air quality is mandated through the county via the federal EPA, and it also has requirements. Street sweeping is actually a portion of the air quality requirements. So the next question is, of course, what does this compliance cost? For fiscal 18, the components for stormwater and street cleaning, street cleaning is about $900,000, and then there's some CIP associated with the, the programs. The bulk of it is that infrastructure, rolling stock, repair and replacement, making sure that we're setting aside money for that full life cycle of assets, which is our policy here in the town. So the total altogether is two point, or $4.25 million total. So we have some general options on what we can do. We could just stop doing the programs. There are some violations per day, fines that we would incur if that were to happen. It would also put our regional funding at risk, not just for us, but for the other municipalities who use MAG and other regional funding. So we don't recommend going that route, but want to look at options. Another option is if we keep the program, we need to fund the program. Some ways that we can fund it would be an environmental compliance fee as an option. We can increase the rate for environmental, for residential garbage services. That's where the services are currently housed within our Environmental Service Residential Program. Or we can fund it through other sources. The only ones that would be really available are Streets VLT because it is unrestricted. We know that the Streets Fund has negative capacity at the moment to do all of the projects that are directly associated there. There's also General Fund, there's unrestricted. Again, we use all the capacity there, but it is unrestricted money if it needed to be. Environmental compliance fee, some more information about that. There are a couple of options, and so we've created a matrix here. On the left-hand side, some options are if we include the street sweeping costs. Again, street sweeping is a component of the air quality, and the small text at the bottom describes that with the street sweeping, the actual equipment, the street sweeping machines that we use, we purchase and get grant funding through environmental, through the air quality grants. So that pays 87% of the equipment costs, and then the town matches on average about 13%. And so as best we could approximate, if we were to split it out, we would recommend an 87-13% split. Although, we do the street sweeping because of the environmental compliance, the air quality requirements. That's the primary purpose which we do it. So we have the two options there. If we do 100% street sweeping associated with environmental compliance, or if we do only 87% and use other funding for the other $115,000. The two options across the top, if we do full cost of the program, that's the $4.25 million, we can also look at only funding the gap. So right now, some of the fees from the environmental service, from the residential garbage collection, is actually subsidizing a portion of this program. The gap between the ongoing revenues and expenditures is about $3.7 million, so we could just fund the gap. The options here, if we do the full cost, we can actually have a reduction in the residential garbage rates so that we don't have that subsidy or that cross between the two programs. So you can see on here, it would be about $4.30 flat fee on all of the utility accounts, residential and commercial, and then we could do a reduction to the environmental service residential accounts. Or we can do just the flat fee of the $3.76 and not do a reduction on the residential garbage accounts, or we can do variations of the fees if we take out some of the streetsweeping For comparison of our regional, there's no strong comparison. Everyone's doing their environmental compliance programs a little bit differently, basically putting them in wherever they can find funding. Mesa is probably the most similar. They have a federal and state environmental mandate compliance fee, which is a mouthful, but very descriptive, and it's $7.32 a month. Phoenix has something similar. It ranges between $0.70 to $30 a month, and Scottsdale has a stormwater account charged at $1.10 a month. Some outreach and milestones. We need some direction from you or indication if you need more information or thoughts, then we will take that and do some one-on-one information in early June and plan to have the notice of intent for the full range of fees ready for the June 15 meeting, customer workshops in August, and then public hearing and possible adoption in the fall. What questions or what can I help with?
Councilmember Peterson.
Kelly, back to the last slide, please. Oh, not that one, sorry. I didn't see you switch to the questions slide. The one with the rates in between, that's all, there we go. Thank you. So that's, so for Mesa, that's $7.32, all customers, residential and commercial, so evenly, every single person, every single company. Okay. And then same with Phoenix, $0.70 to $30, so that'd be maybe $0.70 for, is that broken down some way? Do we know?
I'm gonna phone a friend. Eric Brown is our water resource manager, and he did the research on these.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember, you're right. The Mesa compliance fee is equal across all utility customers, including their gas utility, so they spread it across a great geographical location. Phoenix's environmental excise tax, the $0.70 per month is on the residential accounts, and then on the commercial accounts, they actually do a scaling by your water meter size. We don't see that same correlation, but it can go all the way up to $30 for a commercial customer. And then Scottsdale has a $1.10 per month on all of their water utilities.
Okay, so every customer that they have just pays $1.10?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think one, one item that Kelly kind of briefly mentioned was that similar to our residential trash services, they're not all apples-to-apples, so we don't know necessarily what all of these utilities pay for. We have got two programs lumped into one here, and so that's why it's a little bit difficult to compare, but every, these three cities do have a fee very similar to what we're proposing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Peterson.
Can you go back to the earlier slide with the streets? One more, I think. No, two more. Yeah. When we're talking about the infrastructure and rolling stock, repair and replacement, what kind of rolling stock are we talking about? Are those street sweepers, or what is that?
Yes, it would be the street sweepers, but it's also the stormwater system. So within the streets, there's the conveyance system and the pipes, and those are associated with this program, and they're new now and have been dedicated to the town, but there will be maintenance and repair and replacement required on that infrastructure into the future.
So what's the breakout of the two?
I can't remember exactly off the top of my head. It's majority of the infrastructure side, $2.00 million is the infrastructure, and then the rolling stock is a smaller portion.
Okay, and on the next, on the rates, optional rates, I'm sorry, I'm not processing this very well. I didn't follow the whole 13% rationale there.
Sorry, I didn't explain that well. One of the recommendations, the questions from council from the February meeting was to say, "What if we moved the street sweeping somewhere else and separated that out?" And so we did some research on what it would be if we separated street sweeping out, but street sweeping is a majority associated with the compliance, not with road maintenance. And so if we were to try and figure out how much of street sweeping is associated with road maintenance, we would say no more than 13% would be for that. The other 87, the bulk of street sweeping, is really done for the air quality compliance reasons.
Kelly, do you need direction from us today in order to prepare for the next meeting?
Direction would be helpful, whether it's today or one-on-one in, in the near future.
All right, so we'll start on the left here, Jared, if I don't, if you don't mind me throwing you out to these gentle wolves first.
No problem, no problem, Mayor. I guess I'm open to various options here. I guess I need to stare at this and understand this a little bit. This still assumes that all the street sweeping is being completed, right? We're just talking about how the, it's a percentage of the fund is moving on. Okay. And then the other thing I would want to know, maybe in the future, one-on-one, is, okay, what does that first chart look like if we approve one of these two choices? How, you know, I just want to make sure we're actually solving the problem or not just creating another problem, but maybe that's something in a one-on-one, but Mayor, I guess notionally, I'm comfortable with, you know, either one of these recommendations and would look forward to more discussion.
As far as full cost or revenue gap, what are you thinking?
Full, uh, full cost.
Full cost, yeah, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want information on that now, or do you want me to wait till later?
In terms of, does this solve the problem that we started with?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so with full cost or revenue gap, either way, that's still putting $3.9 million into the fund, because with the full cost, we would back off the environmental garbage rates, so there would still be 3.9 new net.
Okay.
So what happens with that is, this is what it would look like, because we would be making ongoing revenues match ongoing expenditures, and then there would be about $4 million of capital, one-time money that we could use any time in the next five years for capital needs that would come up. Does that answer that?
Yep, that sounds good. And then maybe our, maybe Renee can work on some of the policy side of this at the legislature to reduce the unfunded mandate, mandate. I'm sure you were going to mention that, but thank you, Mayor.
I wasn't, but now that you've mentioned it. Scott, are you in agreement?
Yeah, I'm, one question with the Scottsdale numbers, why is there such a gap between what we would end up charging and what Scottsdale's charging right now?
And that goes to what Eric mentioned. It's really hard to see apples-to-apples on those compliance programs if they're putting the full cost of the program in. My best guess is that they are not fully costing the amount of infrastructure, that they will bond or do some other funding for the repair and maintenance of that infrastructure into the future, whereas we try and save up so that when those repair and maintenance needs come up, we can cash fund those in the future.
Can we look into that a little bit more and make sure that's the case?
Sure.
It could also be that they've had the fund in place for a long time. I mean, it could be that they've, this is where they are because of some long, long ago preparation. We won't know until we look into it. Bridgette?
Um...
I'm calling everybody by their first name now.
Study session.
It's study session.
Yes. I would like to do our one-on-one, Kelly and Eric, to learn more before I make up my mind, but I think I'm leaning to the way Jared and Scott were commenting here, but I still would like to meet with the both of you. Thank you.
Victor, temperature?
This may surprise some people, but I'm not following all the numbers and the math, so I'm just, I have had no time.
Is it because you're not getting to use your own numbers?
I have not verified these numbers. No, I, I think I need a one-on-one, some time to ask some questions before I can give very intelligent direction. I just, I usually prepare a little more on that, and I didn't have these beforehand.
All right, we'll get you at the next one-on-one. Councilmember A.
I share some of the same concerns and questions that have been mentioned, and I think the one-on-ones will help a lot, but I appreciate the work that's been done on this thus far.
Eddie?
I need to spend some time with the numbers as well. It's, I'm still, I'm just, you know, unbelievable that we have to do this, but I want to go through the numbers.
So I will just add one more thing, because it sounds like there's going to be lots of internal dialogue, which is great. I am in favor of making sure that we put whatever dollar amount we decide is the appropriate dollar amount, and, and really, I'm fine. I would like to see us do full recovery on this. I do want us to outline this as state and federal mandates so that people know that we didn't just willy-nilly decide that we were going to come up with a new funding source for the regional park or something else. I want to make sure people really understand what it is that they're paying for and why they're being required to pay it. So that would be my overall direction.
Maybe narrow down a few options. Can we take off the "stop doing the program" option? Are we comfortable with that?
I think that was Councilmember Taylor's request. Councilmember Taylor, can we, all right.
Kelly, one other thing, though. Were we looking for a direction of including it in the environmental services rate?
That's where I'm going next.
Or as a separate rate? If, if there's a rate to be, I think staff's suggestion would be, it would be a separate rate rather than burying it into the, into the Environmental Services Fund.
Lots of head nods here, so I would say absolutely, this is going to be a separate line item, so it will have to be noticed, I think, as an, as a new tax. Is that how it has to be noticed?
Yes.
New fee?
And what we were concerned about is if we wanted to preserve both options, then we have to notice both the increase to the environmental service residential rate and the new fee, and our fear is that residents would be confused and think we were trying to do both. So if you're okay and are not, you don't want to pursue the environmental service residential fee increase, then we can leave that off so it's not confusing. We can notice only a standalone rate, at which point you could choose any level of that rate to the maximum to zero, if that were, if you were comfortable in that direction. And then we can have one-on-one conversation about what size that rate you're comfortable with.
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Cook?
Kelly, you know, obviously, you know, are, are the agencies that are putting this on to us, do you have a breakdown as to all the money that's collected, where the value comes in to the citizen? I mean, is there some return that says, "These dollars are going to do X and this benefits the community, you know, Y, and at the end of the day, we're all happy because Z comes out of this"? I would love to know, you know, what really is going to happen with all these dollars as a release to benefit the community.
All right, Kelly, thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for being here early and making yourselves available. Tonight, I'm going to talk about improving left, our signal operations and things that we want to do at our intersections that have, our signalized intersections within, in the town of Gilbert. This might be affectionately titled, "Leading Versus Lagging," but I'd like to back away from that if I could. I don't think that that's really the appropriate title to be considering here. In going through the research and effort that we did on this, I took Raj up to Scottsdale and introduced him to Paul Basha. Paul Basha is the Transportation Director for the City of Scottsdale. Paul's a traffic engineer, been practicing in the valley for a long time. Paul is, and I'm, I hope I'm not being offensive here, but he is an apostle of lagging left-hand turn operations. He thinks that they are the only way to go. And in that meeting with Paul, Paul said, "There is, there's not a one-size-answer that fits everywhere, period." He said, "In Scottsdale, they have about 15% of their signal operations are not lagging left-hand turns. They are different because you can't apply a one-size-fits-all across your system." And so he said, "That's just not an appropriate situation." He recommended that the traffic engineer be the one that really adjudicate, adjudicate each of those situations and apply the most reasonable solution and recommendation there based upon the, again, the traffic engineering sciences. The goals and priorities we're trying to, to address here are, number one, safety. We want to make sure that the public is able to travel as safely as possible throughout the right-of-way in the town of Gilbert. Next to that, we'd like to try to be as consistent as we can across our system and also with our neighbors. People have to travel through the, through the different communities. We, it's hard to tell when you travel from one to another, especially when you're new to the, to the East Valley. Knowing when you're crossing the corporate limits is something that's very difficult to do, and something that we have today that we didn't have when the direction was given in 2004 is distracted driving problems today are much, much greater than they were in 2004. We kind of think that that's something that, because of that, we want to try to be as consistent as we can with our neighbors so that people aren't having to, if they're not paying as much attention, hopefully the risks will be less to, again, help the safety side of things. Efficiency, we really want to try to keep our traffic moving through the town as efficiently as possible to help people get there, to where they're headed to, to do their commerce, to live their lives, and to enjoy the many wonderful things that the town of Gilbert has to offer. And then finally, number four is economy. We try to do this with as, use as minimal amount of resources possible to accomplish all of these goals. It's a, it's a tall order, and this, again, is one, one-size-doesn't-fit-all, but we'd like to tell you where we want to head. The ask that we have tonight is we'd like to update the 2004 direction the town council gave. At that time, it was all that we should have lagging left-hand turn operations at our signalized intersection in the town of Gilbert. I want to talk about, before we really go into the lagging versus leading, to talk about the types of phasing that we have at signals. When we have a signalized intersection, there are three. One of them, and I'm, I'm not going to talk about, if you pull up to an intersection, it has a green light that doesn't have any arrow indicating it. has a green light that doesn't have any arrow indicating it. If the right-of-way is clear, you can choose to proceed through, you can choose to turn right, you can choose to turn left, as is safe and appropriate. We all took driver's license tests, and that's how you go through a signalized intersection that doesn't tell you, that doesn't give you an indication as to one way or the other. Not going to go into that one because pretty much know how to use that one. A protected phase is what I want to talk about. This is one that many of us become frustrated with, especially in the wee hours of the morning or the evening, as you're sitting in a signal with a red arrow telling you you can't turn left, and you're watching nobody coming the other way, and you're just waiting for the 120 seconds to cycle through before you can get your turn. That's one that not everybody likes. There are times when, as a traffic engineer, you need this option because it becomes essential to provide for the safety of the motoring public. The one that we're more familiar with and we have more of here in the town is what we would call a protected or permissive. There's going to be an indicator that protects that left-turn movement for the traveling, for the motorists moving through that intersection. It's going to have a green arrow and then a yellow arrow, and then it's going to go to a green ball, where then you could, again, choose to go through, make a right or a left according to what the traffic conditions are. That's one we prefer typically, and most of the people that I've spoken with, they really would rather have that than a protected phase. So permissive is the way we would like to keep as many of our signals operating as possible. There are times when we cannot do that because of safety reasons, and in those situations, we go to the protected only, but we try to use that as a last resort. Here's an example. This is going northbound on Gilbert Road up at Warner, and I know many of you have, as you traveled that intersection after we switched it to a protected phase, you wondered, "Why am I sitting here not going when there's nobody coming the other way?" That intersection has some geometric problems. You have what they call a negative offset, and there's also some vertical geometry that it makes it tough to see what the traffic coming the other way is doing when you're in that left-hand turn lane. If you, if you guess wrong and you pull in front of somebody, it can cause a problem. This is a, an example of a permissive one. This is going eastbound on Ray. Pretend you just left Joe's Farm Grill and you really had a wonderful dinner, but you got to go north up towards the freeway. If you look down the road there and that, and you can look across the street, you see those vehicles in the left-hand turn lane across from you, you can see all three lanes of traffic about three-quarters of a mile up the road. There is no reason to have a protected left-hand turn phase here because you can see clearly. And if you choose to turn in front of somebody, that's something that we as traffic, as engineers, we just can't fix that. We prefer that, that people don't do that, but it does happen from time to time. On a protected phase, it is the safest way, it's the safest way to do, control left-turn operations. It is the least efficient way. It's the safest, but it's the least efficient. On a protected and permissive, it's not as safe, but it is the most efficient way for us to move traffic through there. So what a traffic engineer is and our traffic operations people are doing all the time is trying to balance those needs. We want to move people through the town safely, we want to move them through efficiently, and we look to make that, to find a balance, and it's something that they're always looking at and always watching. The existing signals that we have in the town, there's 192 out there, 171 of them control intersections where people are making left-hand turn movements, and of those, we have a number of them that are already leading left-hand turn indicators. All of the signals that we have on our margins with, with the City of Chandler, with the City of Mesa, with the town of Queen Creek, they're all leading indicators. That's how our neighbors operate on that margin, so we operate in the same fashion so that that, as you go through that corridor, it has a very, a similar function to it, and you're not switching back and forth. We have a couple of corridors through our, our town, primarily over on the west-hand side over by Cook's Neck of the Woods. We have short distances of McQueen Road and Cooper Road that come out of Chandler, go through the town of Gilbert, and then enter into the City of Mesa. Those are set up on a leading indicator for the left-hand turn as well. Those we do because, again, to try to keep it more consistent through that corridor, so that's how those are operated. At 20 other locations, or 12% of the signals we have in the town, we have leading left-hand turns or some other type of operation for very specific reasons. When you look at the town, it's a, it becomes kind of a, I don't have all the dots shown on here, but it gets to be kind of a mess, and we're not as being as consistent. On the corridors, again, you see through where Cooper Road, where Cooper Road is at and where McQueen is at, and all the way around the borders, we run those on that leading indicator. Let's talk about safety from a leading versus lagging. Not a lot of data here, that's hard data, that's Gilbert-centric. What we can point to, McQueen, City of Chandler completed a study in '07. They changed McQueen to lagging left-hand turns to match Gilbert, and during the duration of that study, they found a 33% increase in left-hand turn crashes when they went to lagging through that corridor. That was Chandler's experience on one corridor, and I, that's what happened there. A little closer to home and more familiar to us, Chandler Heights in Higley. And we've been having some complaints coming in, and quite a few of them actually recently about accidents occurring there. There was a, it wasn't a good situation, and some of them were bad accidents that had happened, and, and some of the emails and messages that the council, U. Councilmembers got caught up in, it was, we were wanting to address that and do what we could. In 2016, there were 28 crashes at that intersection, and there were, of those, eight of them were northbound, southbound, left-turn incidents. Those are going to be serious and severe crashes. In a three-month period, starting in November of '16 through, through January of '17, we'd had, out of 11 crashes that happened during that three-month period, three of them were northbound, southbound, left-hand turn crashes. We had met with, during the, this time, we were meeting and working with staff to try to figure out what to do, what's the most appropriate thing to do here. Met with PD, we talked with digital, talked with streets, with operations, we were trying to, what, what's the most appropriate, what's the most appropriate steps? PD started an enforcement program, it still wasn't fixing it. What we chose to do was not to go to a protected left-hand turn because it's the least efficient, and we have geometric challenges down there. The right-of-way was limited. If we went to protected, we would have started backing up and having major queues down there that would have been annoying, and our level of service would have started to fail. We said, "Let's take a step, let's take one, one step, the least impacted step that we can and see what we get." We changed it from a lagging left-hand turn control to a leading left-hand turn control and installed new heads that had a flashing yellow arrow on it as well. With that change, in the three months since, there's been, we still had eight crashes, there were zero left-hand turn crashes on that, on those exact same movements during that three-month period of time. So we, we made a change there, and it seems to have improved safety quite dramatically. I didn't calculate it because when you put a zero in there, it doesn't, just keeps going on forever, so it's perfect right now. Let's talk.
I have one quick question on that intersection, David. There's been some concern that by design and by the way that those turn lanes are designed, that they don't provide enough visibility because of the way they're cut. Is, obviously, we prefer zero crashes, eight is still too many. Are these things that we should be looking at from a design standpoint as well?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is something that we are absolutely looking at from a design standpoint as well. The geometry there is, as you said, it is challenged, and you have that hard, that offset issue there. We're looking at spending some money in addition to try to improve that by shaping the median, by cutting the medians from four foot down to two foot. That's, that is in process, and I'll touch on it again a little bit more later on. But good question, thank you for the question. From consistency perspective, we anticipate, staff anticipates that if, if we change to a leading left-hand turn indicator generally across the town, we would be more consistent with our region and more consistent through the town, and we wouldn't have a situation where 30-odd percent of our signals, based upon the margins and elsewhere, are one-way and the rest are a different way. From an efficiency perspective, this is a, some data that you had seen previously on Cooper Road, looking at the capacity there. By changing that to a leading left-hand turn indicator and configuration, we've got additional capacity there without doing anything. We haven't poured a bit of concrete, we haven't done any destruction to anything, we haven't, we've spent essentially $0 on that, and we've got more efficiency out of the, out of that same system there. Moving on to the economy side of it, the Chandler Heights and Higley example, Mayor, that you had mentioned earlier, it does have negative offsets. The right-of-way is limited, all four corners are built out. For us to be able to go in there and improve the geometry and leave it in the current operating condition it had been would have been a significant investment. What does it cost for us to do an intersection project like that? We're experiencing, depending upon what the, the scale of it is, anywhere from $4 million to $10 million, or what, where intersections are coming in nowadays on an arterial arterial. What we're going to do there, shaving, shaving the medians back, that helps, it doesn't fix everything, but it does improve the situation. That's costing us around $170,000 per intersection to do that. It's, it's still not, not small potatoes. Just FYI, MAG is doing a study right now about the offsets and the design conditions at intersections and those offsets that do exist. At staff level, we've already been looking at this and we're working to modify our standards so that we improve that offset situation by design in our town standards so that it, that we don't have that, we're not moving forward and going that direction intentionally. To summarize things from a leading versus lagging operations in the town, when you look at efficiency, it's more efficient for us to move traffic through the town generally when we have a lead configuration. That efficiency can be purchased for very minimal investment. From a consistency perspective, we think that it would get the edge as well because we become more consistent with those that, and within our region and more consistent across the town. Drivers won't have, they won't have to be guessing as much as to what, how this signal's going to work versus the one that they just left. From a safety perspective, it, it really almost becomes a push because this is one where we could choose to go to protect it on every left-hand controlled turn that we have, but then we'd have to be spending, I'm going to say billions of dollars to, to create geometric challenges that we have at all the intersections in the town. I don't think, when the economy comes up, that's why we give the economy leading is a better way to go for, generally for the operations within the town of Gilbert. Now, what is the ask of council? We'd, we'd like to ask the council to modify the direction that was given 2004. In 2004, there were 70 traffic signals at intersections in the town of Gilbert. Today, we have 171, and in two weeks, you're going to be approving 172 to come on board, I hope. We'd ask you to generally, to instruct staff to generally go to a leading left-hand turn operations at our signalized intersections, but again, then empower the town traffic engineer to look at each of those situations individually. We have ones that need something different. We talked about a number of months ago, what happens at, at Higley and Pecos. That's a unique situation, it gets reserved. We look at Market Street and Williams Field, that's a unique situation, it has to be handled differently. When we come up to those, we handle them appropriately for that given condition, but to generally have one situation across the town is what the ask is. And with that, thank you, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I'm sure there will be questions because nothing besides cats and birds brings up such an emotional response for people as leading versus lagging left turns, although we've, we're changing the terminology that we're using, so I'm sure there'll be comments from our council. Vice Mayor?
I'll just make a comment that I agree with that general direction. I thought that for a long time about the leading, so I support the recommendation from staff. That's my comment.
Do you need a moment? All right, let me, let me say a couple of things or ask a couple of questions. Can we go back to the one about efficiency? Yeah, so, I guess, Mayor, I'll just make a couple of points here. I know my personal preference is generally lagging, but the data for me needs to drive the decision, so this speaks a lot. I want to spend a little bit more time on this because I didn't totally understand how does the leading left pick up travel time? Could you just run that by me one more time?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Taylor. What happens is that when a leading configuration, we're able to change the amount of time each indication has during a given cycle. So over a given cycled length that that signal runs for, we can change how much time is given to a left-turn arrow when you're in a leading configuration. When you're in a lagging configuration, you cannot do that. They have to be given equal time if they're permissive. If it's protected, we can do that, but that's a situation, we just really, that hurts efficiency even more.
You mean the left arrow can stay lit longer if it's leading? Why is that the case that you can't alter it for lagging?
Members, Councilmember Taylor, the reason that, there's a term called "yellow trap" that goes down a, I was going to say rabbit hole, but I won't say that, that gets very confusing very quickly. And what happens is that when somebody looks at it as in a permissive movement, they're expecting at the light they see, they, they anticipate something's happening on the other side, the other signal that they cannot see, and that signal coming the other direction may have a green light for the traffic to move through, but because you saw a yellow happen on it, on yours, you're anticipating that it's happening on the other side. It doesn't, and you force people to make a left-hand turn into oncoming traffic that had a green light. Something we don't like to do as engineers. It's, it's, it goes, that's when I would love to do a one-on-one with you.
Yeah.
I'd like to get Rick and Raj to sit down with you to describe that because it gets very technical and it's kind of hard to picture it.
Right, okay. Couple, couple of other comments. Follow-up on that, Jared, just real quick. Bottom line, somebody going southbound can get more of a leading arrow than someone going northbound if you have leading. If it's lagging, they need it at the same time, and that may not make sense based on the amount of traffic that's in both sides of the lane. So anyway, that's.
We'll break out the metrics.
I think that helps. That's right. Okay, we'll do data nerd on a one-on-one. I'd love to understand that because that's a big thing. If the data shows, I think that's what we need to do on this. But I will say on the safety, I think some of the safety, I think, totally with the conclusions on the safety measure, because I think we've heard that some of those could be more attributed to the geometry of it rather than something else, but I want to, I want to add something else here to the conversation a little bit. Whatever we do, I think generally needs to be very consistent with very small deviations. Here's why. I think we all enjoyed the movie Sully at one point. Remember, if you've seen the movie Sully, the Hudson, right? They had, they had a great analysis there of all the data, you know, that should have driven a decision-making, but the case breaking was Captain Sully said, "Well, yeah, but humans don't just work like that." So when, when I see some of these intersections that have gone from lagging to leading, the data is correct, and we're drawing the right conclusions if we're just looking at it from a data standpoint, but Gilbert and Warner have seen it so many times, they're rolling out into that intersection because that's human behavior. And you talked about distracted driving, well, you know, and even if they're not texting or on a phone call, right, a lot of those drive in with, you know, our fast thinking, right? For those of you that are Dr. Kahneman fans, thinking just slow, right? I mean, they're just kind of going with the way that they've done it, and they're not really focusing. One of the major assumptions that I've talked to multiple traffic engineers with is they're assuming everybody's paying full attention. I don't know that that's totally correct when people are driving, whether they're distracted or non-distracted, they're kind of just driving. So that's why, whatever we decide, it has to, it can't be a mix. I know that's the current theory right now with, it needs to be optimized for the intersections. I know mathematically, that probably works, but since we're human beings, we're going to say, "Oh, this is a leading town or a lagging town, and we're going to roll out into that intersection or not." But to be really careful on that. The, the other thing is, I'm with, I'm with you on the data, but I don't think the data is, I don't think we have enough data. I think that there's some opportunity that, that we can look at some data. So, for example, the, well, let's just take this 33% left-turn crash increase, right? We don't know that that's necessarily due, it could be lagging, but it could be human behavior, too. I mean, there's other factors that, because they're not used to that, right? They're rolling out in the intersection, bad things are going to happen to good people when they're not paying attention and the signals are changing on them. But since we have had some changes over the last, what, three or four years, I'd love to see the data on those particular, you know, maybe five years before to current right now. I know we've picked two here, and hey, if the data shows that we're seeing an increase in safety, that can, that data can be directly attributed to the lagging arrow versus geometry and other things. To me, the data just needs to drive the decision on it, but I think the data does need to be tightened up. to drive the decision on it, but I think the data does need to be tightened up just a little bit on that. And then, Mayor, just one last comment in terms of the geometry, because that's a very important comment. Maybe you could speak to traffic standards, and I don't want to get into a big building code or standards discussion here, but I'm kind of surprised that we are sort of in this situation, given, it seems like there'd be a lot of standards that would mitigate a lot of those visual obstructions from, you know, medians and things. But is there anything that we need to do from a council standpoint to revisit some of the intersection standards that we have? So I know we're almost a build on in the intersections, but if this is a consistent problem, what opportunity, if any, do we have to fix the ones going forward?
And maybe I could just chime in on that just for a second, because MAG, Regional Transportation Authority, has standards that Gilbert follows. But on occasion, and Higley and Chandler Heights is a perfect example, there's a certain amount of curve to that road that was changed by design from developers on Higley Road, the way that it turned. And that created the issue. It's not the standard necessarily, it's the fact that there's a curve in the road that wasn't accounted for during that design process. And so--
Fair enough.
It's one of those things, too, that when we had stop signs up there 12 years ago, we didn't have a problem as much with, you know, northbound and southbound high-speed crashes either. So the town has evolved, and we need to evolve with it. So I think it's moving forward. I don't know that it's a retroactive-type conversation. Obviously, there's a lot of things we can do to mitigate it.
Well, anything else on that? I, I just don't know if our standards are out of date, that we need to update those, given new information.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Taylor, our standards are, are going to continue to evolve over time, and that's something that we're looking at right now, to make some modifications to improve so that we won't have the situation that the mayor described coming up in the future. We're trying to avoid it. As we go into those intersections, the cost to go in and correct those situations that do exist is going to be astronomical, and it's something that we would rather try to do it through control, or with the most, again, take an incremental, stepwise approach, and let's take the least, or the most cost-effective steps first, and then work till we get to a place where we're, we're at an equilibrium for that particular piece of our facilities that is something that we can all live with. Because some of the, some of the things, incidents that do occur, we cannot correct. We cannot change an inattentive driver.
Thanks, Jake, Jared. Just real quick on the efficiency slide. I just need some clarification, because we are talking about Cooper Road, and hasn't it been under construction for this entire time?
Madam Mayor, great question. These, these numbers were prior to the beginning of the construction at Cooper--
Oh, that says 16. Okay, I follow.
This is, this is information that had been shared--
Previously.
Yes, previously.
I was like, that's really incredible. Apparently, we should just keep all of our streets under construction. Everything will improve. All right. Scott, you have--
Just one question following up on what Jared was talking about on consistency. That's the most important thing for me. And I'm curious about the borders. Are we being consistent if we're matching the community next to us? Do we want them to follow through whatever their signal pattern is, or should we just establish ours and be consistent in Gilbert with just whatever our standard is?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, that's a good question. Staff believes that we ought to be more consistent with our neighbors. When you look at the, just the, the number of signals that exist there, the amount of margins that we have, just the geom, the nature of the, of the region that we're in, we think it's probably more prudent and cost-effective for us to be more consistent with our neighbors rather than trying to get them to be more consistent with us.
That send a, but it sends a signal, I think, to the, the drivers somewhat confused, I think, entering in, what, what's to be expected once I'm in Gilbert? Is it going to be the same as what it was on the border, or is it going to be different? That's, that's all I'm concerned with.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, it's a great comment, and it's one that we want, we really want to have as generally consistent across our system as possible. We think that's the most appropriate, that it's the safest way for us to operate the traffic system that we do have. Again, there are, there will be specific instances that occur at locations where there's something about the way the traffic enters and exits onto that piece of right-of-way that will call for something different, and those will typically have signed with static signs in addition to the signals there, so that people will realize that there is something different at this one. Pay attention.
Thank you.
So David, first of all, I want to say, please never leave us, because I know it took us a very long time to get a new town engineer, and you're just amazing and easy to work with and a pleasure to work with. I appreciated that you put up your four points of starting with safety, because I'm a very creature of habit, so I like the consistency portion of it. I was a documentation person in my past life, so I was very consistent with everything that I did, and that was my top goal always. But here in Gilbert, obviously, our goal needs to be safety for our, for our residents, and consistency comes second. So I'm a lagging left girl. I really prefer the lagging left arrows. I was really pleased when they were changed. I remember the whole process and going through it. But I believe that there is a good reason for us to meet what our neighbors are doing, and especially because we've grown so much and all the changes that we have. But Councilmember Anderson just made a good point, is right now, we've got a mix. And I see you're asking for us to still allow here or there to be able to do something different. That's the only part I struggle with. I think I would be fine with changing to the leading left if we could stay consistent. I'm still struggling with, do we give you the ability to maybe be lagging left where it needs to be? I do also believe that a lot of us live in a box, and so we get used to exactly where we travel on a very daily basis. I think for the seven of us, it's different. For you, it's different, because you're all over the town. We're all over the town. I see different intersections all the time. Every day, I could be in a different, in a different spot. So that's the part I'm struggling with. So do we give you the ability to change as needed? So convince me, why should we go to leading left, but then give you the ability to change as needed?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, that is a very difficult question to answer, and I'll do my very best. Thank you for it, and I appreciate your compliment at the beginning, too. There are specific examples that I can point to. One I'm thinking of right now was a number of years ago, when Fiesta Mall used to actually be a bustling hub of economic activity in the city of Mesa. There is an intersection that enters into Fiesta Mall, and because of the amount of traffic that would try to move into there at that point in time, they couldn't move all the traffic with the same phasing. They could have to move all of, they would empty out one left-hand turn movement and, at, at the beginning of that cycle, and the other left-hand turn movement, they would empty out at the end of the cycle, because that was the only way they could move all the traffic through there that, that they wanted to. Well, since then, they haven't, they've fallen on horrible economic times, and it really doesn't matter anymore, because there's nobody turning in there. But those kinds of situations do happen, and they occur. They're very unique, and they're absolutely the exception, and it doesn't happen often. The one I point to in the town of Gilbert is the intersection of Pecos and Higley. That northbound movement in the AM, wanting to get onto the freeway, the closest places to get to the freeway are Higley or over at, over at Santan Village Parkway. There's a huge volume of traffic that's wanting to turn left at that intersection. And what happens is there's so many people there, that queue backs up, and it backs up and backs up. So what we do to operate there is they get a leading left-hand turn indicator, they clear, then it's, goes to, then it goes to a, a green ball, they stop that traffic, and then when the traffic heading southbound, which is not nearly as voluminous as that heading northbound or heading north to west, when it clears, they put a red light on that southbound movement and give a green arrow again to that northbound at the end of that cycle, so that it gets served twice in this, within that single phase that's happening for that green northbound ball. Those kinds of situations, they do occur, they are the exception, they're absolutely not the norm. When those happen, I believe it's really prudent to have the ability for the traffic engineer and traffic operations staff to identify those, to look for the best way to serve the need that that specific location has. And again, they are absolutely the exception, they are not the rule, and we can use static signs to, again, warn the drivers there that there's going to be a different condition, be paying attention at this intersection, operate through it safely.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. That was good. Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation. I think it made a lot of sense. And so, I think, I, I'm of the opinion that we move forward with this. I look forward to additional discussions and as questions arise from council members. Thank you for your time and willingness to meet with us and answer those questions.
Well, David knows my opinion, and I will say publicly, I believe the most stressful driving operation is when you creep out in the middle of the intersection, wanting to make that left-hand turn. I, I will, I will say that is the most stressful maneuver. And the lagging left, in my opinion, prevents that to happen. You can clearly make that left-hand turn safely, because in theory, all the traffic is stopped. Now, I understand the efficiency and the amount of capacity, but again, as a driver, it doesn't matter what age you're at, that is the most stressful maneuver. And I'm, you know, as much as you went through the data, as Councilmember Taylor talked about, I'm looking at that psychological stressful point of having that driver be confident that they feel safe to make that left turn. So for me, it's, it's the lagging left. Now, I want it consistent across the entire town to be one type, and it looks like I'm going to be outvoted here. But anyways, great job, and move forward.
I think you've heard from all of us. Thank you for your work. We're excited to see more development as we move forward, and we know that the project is in the right hands with Raj and you and others. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, that was our last study session agenda item for tonight. So we will recess. Actually, we will adjourn the study session, and we will start again at 6:30 with our students' citizens of the month. Thank you.